Here we go.
Now we're golden.
Madam Mayor, would you please come forward and help us with the Award for Excellence?
Thank you Chairman Schob and members of the City Council. It's always a pleasure to be here and especially on days like this when we get to recognize our talented employees here at the City of Lincoln. The Mayor's Award of Excellence for July is presented to Public Information Specialist Jamie Wentz and Beau Wolfe of the City Communications Division of the Mayor's Office.
That explains a lot on the video, doesn't it?
Jamie has worked for the city since 2013 and Beau has worked for the city since 2004. They were nominated in the categories of Customer Relations and Productivity by Lincoln Police Officers Angela Sands and Luke Bonkowitz for their work to help LPD share important public safety messages on Link TV. When LPD is needed to communicate with the public regarding incidents and investigations, Jamie and Beau have responded, often on short notice, to livestream briefings and produce recorded statements. The nominators wrote, "Their expertise, experience, and willingness to work odd hours to accommodate rapidly evolving investigations allowed LPD to disseminate critical information in an extremely polished and professional manner." Jamie and Beau also produced two video series for LPD. The first, called This Is Why, is a series of short videos with LPD officers telling why they've entered law enforcement. The videos have received tens of thousands of views on LPD's social media sites, and they were so popular that Lincoln Fire and Rescue got in on the act and asked them to produce a similar series for LFR. The second series featured children's book reviews with officers reading at locations throughout the city. These were also very popular on social media and boosted the number of followers for LPD. Jamie and Beau also worked with LPD on a public awareness campaign involving safe storage of firearms. Police Chief Jeff Blymeister wrote about the importance of LPD being transparent and building trust with the public in advance of tragic incidents. He said Jamie and Beau, quote, "Have brought innovation in approach and production allowing LPD to reach new audiences." The nominators also commended the pair's work ethic, flexibility, and positive attitude, as well as the pride that they take in their work. It's very much my pleasure to present Jamie Wentz and Beau Wolfe with the Mayor's Award of Excellence for July. Please join me in congratulating them for their hard work and commitment to the City of Lincoln. City Communications Director, Diane Gonzalez, would like to say a few words to congratulate Jamie and Beau. Diane, do you want to come up?
Thank you. I think we can all agree that Jamie and Beau have earned an excellent reputation for their hard work and for their flexibility and for producing really high-quality, interesting programs. Most of you probably don't know they've won this award before individually. Let's see. Jamie won the award, an award, in 2017 for some work he did with the Lincoln Arts Council. Beau was actually the annual award winner in 2012 for some anti-bullying initiative work that he did. So they have been recognized before, and I think we can all be proud that Lincoln has one of the best government television operations in the nation. And to top it off, Jamie and Beau are super-nice guys and really laid back, so I'm really pleased to see them honored again in this way.
Thank you. Jamie, Beau, would you guys like to take a moment and speak?
Go ahead, Beau.
Yeah. There are two microphones. Beau, you should know this.
Yeah, pop up there, Beau.
And don't forget to acknowledge your family when you...
Yeah. My father-in-law Lou and my wife Patty are here, and Beau, go ahead.
My wife Christine is here as well.
But I will point out the two projects that the mayor had mentioned actually were both projects that Beau tackled. And if you haven't had a chance yet to see the work that he and Officer Bonkowitz did on the Book Challenge videos, seek them out on the Police Department's Facebook page. They are well worth the watch. They're very entertaining. I think Officer Bonkowitz kind of missed his calling, and he should be in video production because the ideas he came up with were a lot of... I think Beau had a little too much fun shooting the series, so... And there are more to come that he's been working on the last week or so, but it's an honor and it's kind of nice to work with other departments in the city. We kind of see our role as kind of helping get the city's message out, so thank you.
Well, Beau, please.
Thank you. It's an honor. It's, you know, great work with other departments. And then, like Jamie said, it's been fun working with Luke on these different videos, and he's definitely missed his calling. I mean, the jokes he comes up with and the stuff for kids is amazing. It makes my job easy.
He seems like much more of an introvert than that. I appreciate what you guys do. It's a great resource for me. I'm able to refer citizens to the videos and the pages, and it's a quick and easy way to get our message out in an information age where video is king. Thank you both for what you do. Other council people, would you like to say anything at this time?
Who's running the camera?
Yeah.
Melissa, the Health Channel Coordinator, is running it for us and doing a great job, it looks like.
Yes, she is, yeah.
So we may be replaced soon, but we're going to get back there and get to a place where we're more comfortable.
Thank you both, and congratulations.
Give another round of applause.
Yes. Madam Mayor, do you have more? No? Thank you very much for joining us today. We'll now go to our regular meeting of the Lincoln City Council. We'll start by asking you to join me as we rise to do Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag followed by a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with LV 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may make a short rebuttal. Each speaker may begin by, should begin by stating their name, address, and whether you're speaking in favor of or in opposition to an item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meeting of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Madam Clerk, would you call our first item for today's agenda?
Certainly. We ask those of the general public coming forward to testify to please clearly state your name, spell your name, give your address, and sign in on the sign-in sheet lying on the podium. Testifiers may use either microphone, and there is a sign-in sheet by each microphone. We ask those individuals from city staff who are testifying to please state your name, title, and the department you work for. Our first item of business is our public hearing consent agenda, items one through three. This does include an appointment to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Is Jennifer Seacrest here?
Good afternoon. Lynn Johnson with Lincoln Parks and Recreation. It is my pleasure to introduce you to Jennifer Seacrest. Jennifer is here this afternoon for affirmation of appointment to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Jennifer is a landscape architect with Olson, and we are very pleased to have her design, expertise, and urban planning skills available to us as a new member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Missy Chris, do you have anything you'd like to say?
No, I just would say that I'm honored to be part of this board and excited to offer some expertise and advise the team.
Yay. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding this appointment?
I'm really excited about your appointment. I had the good fortune to serve with, I'm going to guess, your grandmother on the Parks and Rec Board a number of years ago.
Probably grandma-in-law, Mike Seacrest?
Mike, that's right.
Yes, yes.
Other comments?
Any other comments? Thank you very much for your willingness to serve. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to speak on any item on the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, I think no one's coming forward, so can we vote on that?
No, we can vote on these items. Items one A through C were introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Washington, second by Christensen. Discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Item two A was introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Bowers, second by Christensen. Discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Next, then, are public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward and raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I'll call items four A and B together. They are the application of variations for a Class C liquor license at 317 South 11th Street and the related manager application of David Fox. Did you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you are about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
David A. Fox, 824 Lamont Drive, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68528.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Fox, thank you very much for coming forward. Tell us a little bit about why you're asking for an application and just tell us what's going on.
I've been selling alcohol since 1979, been an employee at the Night Before Lounge for 29-plus years. It sold, and I did not want to stay on there. And the opportunity came up to purchase the bar just right down the sidewalk, which is a neighborhood I've been in for a long time. And it's just a business that I have been familiar with for many, many years.
I understand. Thank you. Counsel, do you have questions? Is there anybody in the council chambers that has questions about this agenda item or would like to offer testimony? Thank you very much, Mr. Fox. Thank you very much for coming forward.
Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, would you go to our next agenda item?
Yes, I'll call items four C and D together. They are the application of White Elm Brewing Company for a Class C liquor license at 801R Street, Unit 3, and the related manager application of Colby Wood. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you are about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
Sure. My name is Colby Wood. Address is 3171 Van Dorn Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68502.
Good afternoon, Mr. Wood. Thank you for coming forward. Tell us a little bit about your application.
Sure, sure. So I, along with my business partners, Matt and Martha Lee Heine, had opened White Elm Brewing Company at 7th and Van Dorn in 2016. We've got nearly three years under our belt now, and we've begun looking to expand into a satellite taproom. An opportunity became available at 801R Street, and so we'd like to submit an application to open our satellite taproom there.
Thank you. Questions from the council?
I do have one question.
Counselwoman Washington.
I am curious. Can you tell me what your, the role of your other business partners will be?
Sure, sure. They are part of the kind of long-ranging plan for White Elm Brewing Company. I'm sort of boots-on-the-ground, day-to-day operations. My previous experience was in Denver for 10 years. I was a partner in a multi-unit operation for restaurant bars, approximately 250 employees. So multi-unit is kind of what I came from. So I work with them, you know, daily on sort of long-range plans. Day-to-day operations are kind of, you know, my end of the deal.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions from the council? Mr. Wood, I do have one. You're moving into the facility used to be Legends, is that correct?
That's correct.
And before that, Flatwater Bistro?
That's correct.
And they were more bar/restaurant settings. Will White Elm be moving more toward a restaurant-type facility?
Well, we actually hope to offer small plates similar to charcuterie. We are actually demising off about 2,200 feet of the space. So we would have the bar area. Everything that we would produce from a food perspective would be cold side, working with a few local vendors to provide, you know, cured meats, cheeses, things like that. And so we would have a food offer available to our guests, but we wouldn't be a full-service restaurant, no.
And sometimes in your other facility, over at Van Dorn, you do have other food trucks-type establishments.
Absolutely.
Do you plan to continue that in the downtown area?
You know, we hope to. I know there can be some challenges from a parking perspective for the food trucks, and so it's not something that we've dove headlong into at this stage. If we can do it in a compliant fashion, we'd be glad to. We've also spoke with people in the neighborhood who are opening or operating restaurants already to have a food offer available in which we can have them bring in food to the taproom, whether it be through delivery, kind of similar to something Boiler has with the single barrel, or, you know, pick it up and bring it into our taproom, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there other questions from members of the council chamber, from the council and people in the... Anybody got any more questions? Want to offer any additional testimony regarding this application? Mr. Wood, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. I'll call item four E next. Application of James Arthur Vineyards for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring 80 feet by 12 feet at 803 Q Street on Saturday, October 5th, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Just state your name and address.
Jim Ballard, 1503 West Raymond Road in Raymond, Nebraska. This is basically a special designated license for the annual Lincoln-Liba tailgate party before the Nebraska game. And it's going to be basically in an area that's already under our current liquor license, but we can only sell what we make, of course, with James Arthur Vineyards, which is wine. This would allow the opportunity to bring some beer in just for that event, so.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Ballard, for giving us the information. Counsel, do you have questions for this applicant? Is there anyone in the chamber that has questions about this application or would like to offer testimony? Thank you very much for your time, Mr. Ballard.
Thank you.
All right. I'll call item four F. Application of ZipLine Brewing for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 20 feet by 40 feet at the Center for People in Need located at 3901 North 27th Street on Saturday, September 21st, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. No oath on this one.
My name is Tom Wilmouth, T-O-M-W-I-L-M-O-T-H. Address of the business ZipLine is 2100 Magnum Circle, Suite Number 1, and that is 68522 here in Lincoln.
Good afternoon. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Tell us a little bit about what you're doing at Center for People in Need on the 21st.
Certainly. At first, I just want to say congratulations to my fellow brewer, Mr. Wood. I think I was among the first customers in his existing taproom, and he's done a fabulous job, and it's really great to see the community grow, so big, big congrats to him. This event is something that we're doing to support the El Centro de las Americas. The event's being held, as you said, at the Center for People in Need. This is a collaborative beer that we have produced with a Mexico City brewery, and the idea is to try to raise awareness of the kind of relative contributions of folks throughout the Americas. So we're looking to have a little beer garden on site. El Centro is really running the overall event, but what we're looking to do is have a couple of discreet serving times during the event in an area that will be partitioned off and made easy to regulate from the standpoint of making sure that we don't have any minors in the area.
Questions from the council? I noticed your hours are very early in the morning till medium late in the afternoon.
Yes, and I can explain that. The reason for the application being done that way is we weren't certain exactly at the time that we made the application when the windows would be, and I've been working with Mr. Garrett at El Centro to kind of pair that in. I think what we're currently looking at is two sets of serving times, two to four and six to eight, and that way we don't have a large, continuous serving period, which is something we'd like to avoid.
Thank you. Other questions from the council? Would anybody in the chamber like to offer testimony on this application? Thank you very much for coming forward.
Thank you very much.
And Madam Clerk, can we go to our next item?
Yes. Four G is the application of High Level Happiness for a special designated license to cover two outdoor areas measuring approximately 60 feet by 23 feet and 45 feet by 14 feet at the south of downtown Art Hub located at 1247 South 11th Street on Sunday, September 29th, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Hello. How are you guys?
I am well. How are you?
Good. Just...
Yeah.
I'm Carolyn Butler, and I am the person who runs High Level Happiness, which is a nonprofit here in town. And we are looking to build a Tree B&amp;B right here in Lincoln.
Say that again.
A Tree B&amp;B.
Okay.
And right here, oop, right here in Lincoln. And so we're having our first fundraiser on October 29th, and we are needing a special license for that, for the alcohol.
I understand. Questions from the council?
Would you mind explaining a little bit more about a Tree B&amp;B, please?
I would be happy to. I work for Nebraska Wildlife during the day. That's my daytime job. But I'm a very strong believer that city environments need to create more opportunities for nature immersion in the city. And so a Tree B&amp;B is one way to do that. We are using a pay-it-forward model. The idea is that a person will pay for one night in the treehouse, but they'll pay for another night for a person who's experienced hardship, whether that be abuse, battering, bullying, discrimination. So we're going to try to give back to our community because we really believe that nature is a healer. But the kinds of environments we want to create are, although we absolutely love our Lincoln Parks, this is more of a nature immersion situation where you have native Nebraska trees, plants, and so on, where you have a more complex situation. And this little Tree B&amp;B, I could show you a picture of where it's going to go because you'd probably be surprised. If I set this on here, will it show?
Yes.
Face it.
It'll take it a couple of seconds to catch up with us, but... And there's a monitor right in front of it. You can see right, there's a little computer screen.
Face it down.
So the Tree B&amp;B will be at 1247 11th Street. It's right next to the south of downtown Community Development Center, right across the street from Everett Elementary. We specifically wanted to put some little gem in a part of town that would like a little gem. So it's going to be in this spot. It will not be perched in a tree. It will be on footers. We are working with the UNL Architectural College with their Design Build Studio. The students have created the design. It is overseen by Tammy Eaglebowl, who is our overall architect for High Level Happiness. And, but you will open a gate. It will have a big gate around it. And inside, you'll basically, I don't know if you've ever done this in a garden, but you walk into somebody's backyard and you just are, your breath is taken away at how it feels to be in an immersive nature space. And this Tree B&amp;B will be like that. So it's going to be in this little area where you can see, it's just a driveway. It's a 13-by-24-foot space. It'll be two stories. It'll be a net-zero facility. We also want to teach people about how important it is for us to start using resources in a different way. We will incorporate reclaimed ash. We will incorporate eastern red cedar that is invasive on the prairie. And so really try to make it an educational facility as well. So that's what the Tree B&amp;B is. It will be a scalable kind of thing, and we're hoping that if it really takes off, maybe we could help other people do the same kind of thing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions from the council? Ms. Butler, so that's your overarching idea and project, but today you're asking us for a special Disney license as part of a fundraiser to get that off the ground, correct?
That's right. It's our kickoff fundraiser. It'll be a silent auction. It'll have kids' activities, and I submitted a design to show you where everything would be. And Juju's Cuisine is going to have vegan, wonderful food there. And then White Elm Brewery is providing the beer, so.
Excellent. Wonderful. Thank you. Is there anyone in the council chambers that would like to testify on this agenda item? Seeing no one coming forward, Ms. Butler, thank you for your testimony.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk, can we move to our next item?
Yes, that would be application of Herdat LLC for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 356 feet by 230 feet at the rail yard at 350 Canopy Street, 601R Street, on Saturday, September 28th, from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Mitten with Herdat. So we're asking for another STL based off the last one. We thought it went really well. And if our team's doing as good as we'd like it to for Ohio State, we think we're going to get a large crowd, so we want to be able to accommodate them comfortably and safely. So we'd just like to thank you guys for coming to the last one and giving us your suggestions. Some of the things that will change for this one, we want to add some more security to our main entrances to make sure we can monitor everything that's going in and out. And then we'll change how the tables are set up as a safety standpoint so people can leave easier and walk the space. And then we're planning on creating some family-friendly programming in the green space behind Hero and Mellow Mushroom. And then we're also going to double our portable restrooms, so.
Thank you. Questions from the council?
I do.
Counselwoman Washington.
I have two questions. When I was looking at the diagram, and you have the red borderline on the west side between the Hilton, on the alley.
Would you put the map on the overhead so we can share with the public?
Yes.
Three. There we are.
All right. So on the alley side, I was curious if that was going to be a porous or non-porous boundary? Because I didn't see where there was security.
So our plan is to get a screen, actually, for that area, so that will be our family-friendly area. If you need a quiet space to come watch the game, so we're going to either fence it off or we're going to use it, or we'll put the screen there to use it as a barrier. But we can get security back there also.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Would you point to the map on the left? So we could help us orient? Thank you.
Okay. And then my second question comment has to do with the number of people you expect. At the last event, you had between 1,500 and 2,000, and it seems like a huge jump to go to 5,000. Where do you think those people will be?
Well, we'd like them to be in the green space. That's why we want to utilize that to make it so that's another place people can kind of venture off to instead of just being in the rail yard, which is why we want to add another screen. We feel that during the game, they don't move into the street just because you can't see the screen as well, so they're all in the rail yard. So if we add another screen, that'll drive some people that way, so they're not all in one spot.
Okay. And what is the capacity? And what is the capacity in that green area?
We have not met with the fire marshal yet, so we don't know that exact number.
Okay.
Other questions from the council? When you said "screen" earlier, I thought you meant screening so people from the street couldn't see. I didn't realize you were in.
No, like a TV screen, yeah.
Another TV monitor-type screen.
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess one other thing, we had talked with you guys about our fencing by Mellow Mushroom. We plan to end it before Jimmy John's, and then we'll block off that open area that we had noticed, so.
Thank you. Again, questions from the council? Is there anyone in the council chambers that would like to add testimony to this application? Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I would like to move approval of items 4A through H.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Christensen, and a second by Councilwoman Ward for approval of items 4A through H. Discussion of the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Next then are public hearing resolutions. Item 5A is co-sponsoring the 2019 Veterans Day Parade and authorizing up to $10,000 in expenditures for the parade from the 2019-20 contingency and city council reappropriation funds.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Christensen, would you help me understand what's going on here?
This is my issue here, and I want to give you some history to begin with. You were here for, Mr. Schob, in 2017. I introduced a resolution where the council would authorize a parade, a veterans' parade, on an annual basis with the city as a cosponsor. And no parade took place that year. It was too late to get things organized. The next year, 2018, was the first year this parade has taken place, and it was co-sponsored by the city and the Marine Corps League. Now, because of their mission definition, they felt it best, after that first year, that they not be the cosponsor, and a group of veterans, of which I was invited to be a part, have formed the Marine Corps, excuse me, not Marine Corps.
Okay.
The Lincoln Veterans Parade Group, and that is an official, now registered, nonprofit organization. Last year, the city, we gave $12,000 for support of this event in our co-sponsoring role. This year, we're asking for $10,000. And as I said, I am on the board of directors of Lincoln Veterans Parade Group, and so when the time comes, right now, I'm not acting as a council member. I'm acting as a board member of that board, and when it comes time to vote, I will recuse myself.
I understand. Thank you. Questions from the council?
Let's talk just a little bit about the money. I'm supportive of a parade. A parade makes sense. I think honoring our veterans is a good idea, but I'd like to know where the $10,000 is being proposed to come from, and if, I don't know, Brandon or you would like to...
Well, Brandon, you want to explain that?
Mr. Kaufman, would you come forward and help us?
Afternoon. So there's two funding sources. Oh, sorry. Brandon Kaufman, Finance Director for the city. So there's two funding sources that were being proposed. One, I think half was coming out of contingency, so we have a contingency appropriation included in our annual operating budget, and that's carried over from year to year. So I'm seeing if I can get the exact numbers right now, but I think we're well over a million dollars in contingency that's been carried over, so that's half of it. And then the other half is re-appropriated dollars from the council's budget. And every department has re-appropriated dollars that they, it's money that's carried over that they haven't spent in previous years. So there is money available in the council budget to spend that's coming from re-appropriated dollars. So that's where kind of the other half of those dollars is coming from. The general fund contingency right now is a million, $95,000.
Okay.
Thank you. And so I'll tell you the...
Thank you.
The kind of expenses that will be paid for are police support of the parade. There'll be a police presence there for public safety. There'll also be LFR component there at present. This pays for those things. Also, the Lincoln Transportation Utilities Department will be there to set up and remove barricades, things like that. There may be a need to actually, because of anticipated floats, there may be a need to swing arms of the traffic signal away from the road and then swing them back after the parade. So we think this is a pretty close approximation to those costs.
Is this a shared public-private expense? I'm assuming the veterans groups have money also?
The veterans, the Lincoln Veterans Parade Group has been soliciting contributions for sponsorships from private businesses and groups in the city, yes. And this, I expect this to be maybe a quarter of the budget for the parade, or maybe a lot less. There's, there's some civic groups or businesses are stepping up to provide significant funding.
Other questions from the council? As Councilman Christian said, I was able to attend last year, and a good time was had by me. I think you're expecting bigger and better things?
We're expecting a significantly larger crowd. We had part of one high school band last year and total of 23 parade entries. This year, I think we're anticipating probably closer to 50 parade entries, and we are looking at at least six high school, full high school marching bands.
Thank you very much. Other questions from the council? We are in public hearing. Is there anyone in the council chambers that would like to testify on this agenda item? Seeing no one coming forward, I think this is our only item here. We can vote on this resolution.
Yes, and it was introduced by Christensen.
Can he say "so moved"? I will say "so moved". So, yeah, "so moved",
Very good.
And waiting for a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Motion by Chair Schob, second by Councilman Bowers. Any discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Bowers?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, four to zero.
Thank you very much.
Next then?
Then, since the public hearing on resolutions, we'll move to our ordinances on third reading, and I'll let you have it back, sorry.
That's okay. I'll call item 7A through, actually. 7A is Comp Plan Amendment 19003. This is the application of Aggett LLC to amend the 2040 Comp Plan to change the future land use designation and from commercial to industrial on approximately 135 acres. I will note for the record that items 7A through E are all related to property generally located at Highway 77 and Interstate 80. Item 7A was introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second.
And we do have a motion to amend number one to accept a substitute resolution.
And I would move to amend the original resolution.
Second.
We have a motion by Ward and a second by Christensen to amend the resolution. Is there any discussion of the motion to amend? Would someone from staff come up and help us understand what the motion to amend actually does?
To Mr. C, City Law Department, the motion to amend adds language that is included in the other four ordinances and resolutions that are related to this item that allow for the contingency, so the resolution would become effective upon closing on the property so long as it occurs no later than 120 days from today's date.
Thank you very much. Questions for Mr. C? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For that explanation, it was, so we have a motion to amend, a motion and a second to amend. Any additional discussion of that motion? Would you please call the roll on the motion to amend?
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Then on the main motion?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. 7B then is annexing approximately 576 acres, introduced by Ward.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Ward, second by Councilwoman Washington. Discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?